Sadie, Apache Junction Works Session to Order. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Discussion on Potential Amendments to the Landscape Maintenance Contract with Brightview Landscape Services, Liz.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sertie, members of council. As I had shared in our staff memo, our contracted maintenance areas are currently being maintained by Brightview. They won the contract about eighteen months ago, and they've been on contract for the last year. They took over previously for Somerset, and overall, they've done a much better job than Somerset, but we still have been kind of working with them on clarifying expectations and getting things up to par. This time in October or in September was when we were up for our one-year renewal, and we learned at that time from Brightview that at the current price that we have, they cannot service our contract. And so, talked about some of the reasons why that is. I had shared with you a little bit about some of the minimum wage changes, some of the additions that we have added since the original contract were negotiated and when the original RFP was out, so Royal Palm is a little bit, has a little bit more growth now. Apache Trail Median is going to be changing a little bit. And so, they had shared with us kind of what they were expecting price-wise, and we let them know that those, that we wouldn't be able to do that. They were coming up with a thirty percent increase in some of our fees, and we just really didn't feel that that was something that the city could do. While we kind of looked and were able to bring back to you guys some of the options and talk with our city attorney, we did extend the contract for sixty days per the terms of the contract, we were able to do that, and go ahead.
So, that's good that they honored the contract. They didn't bail out halfway like a lot of people worry about. What if something happens? Are we going to be stuck with it? So, they fulfilled their whole.
Absolutely, and they, you know, when the contract is over, there are stipulations in the contract that they have to leave it in the condition that we needed. We have a lot of options to look at other sources, however. In looking at many of those sources, we don't have a whole lot of other opportunities out there. We did talk with them about some pricing that we thought would be acceptable for the amount of additional things that they would be responsible for. We talked a little bit about that a ten percent increase would be something that they would be willing to consider if we decided that that was something that we could do on our end that would help them to be able to fulfill some of the things and some of the new things that we were looking for. Simultaneously to that, we did reach out to some of the vendors that are on the Mojave State contract and other cooperative contracts just to get an idea if we were to go month-to-month, if we decided not to continue with the contract with Brightview, and it was about four hundred percent of an increase. So, four times the amount that we're currently paying is what we found out in the market. And so, that, you know, has us concerned. We would not be able to afford that. So, at this time, what we are, what staff is recommending is that we work with Joel to amend the couple of things in our contract that, you know, expectations that we have of them, and go ahead and amend the price to be an increase of ten percent, which is approximately thirteen thousand dollars over the whole year. They're willing to do that for the next year, and that would give us an opportunity, I think, in this year to look at either going out for another RFP, because if it's anything more beyond that, you know, we really have to be able to go out and say, you know, look, look at what are all the options. But it'll give us a chance to do that as well as look at options of, we pay about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year for all of these other maintained areas, but maybe we look at, do we take those back under our own maintenance staff? Are there other options that are out there? We've started talking with Mesa and several other cities. Get farther away.
Yeah.
I'm so loud. I don't even need the microphone.
That's perfect right there.
Okay, so those were some of the, those are some of the options that we'll pursue, but we need to have something in place now, and so.
Let's talk about now with what just happened on the median. Will that be their responsibility too? So, there's some added work.
Yes, so that is one of the big key, that is a big key area as well as Royal Palm. Those trees are now getting to a state where they'll have to be trimmed, and there'll be much more maintenance happening with that. So, those are definitely two major areas.
Flatiron, has that been turned over to them yet? Or is that still with the original contract?
Flatiron is actually under, so all of our parks are under the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Division. All of the right-of-way or neighborhood HOA properties are what are under our landscape maintenance contracts. So, the freeway art that's out there, Royal Palm, Apache Trail Median, the trails that are in a Royal Verde and Renaissance Point. Many of the other just smaller right-of-way portions are all within this contract as well. The Public Works has some areas also that are in there. So, there's a lot, it's a variety of things that are not, that are outside of our regular parks.
And we're still a ways away, but when the dog park gets done?
That'll be under us, not under this. So, this landscape maintenance contract is solely for right-of-way types of landscaping. That is not a traditional park setting. They have the ability and the experience and safety things to be working in those right-of-way areas. We, our guys are strictly, when we lost a lot of our staff during the recession timeframe, these areas got turned over to a maintenance contract. So, our parks are under our guys, and they will, the dog park will continue to be under our staff. We feel very confident that the amount of routine maintenance at the dog park will be very manageable with what we have.
I know we're not supposed to mix topics, but.
Oh, yes.
We're not supposed to mix topics, but with Nick Blake not being there anymore, I know Nick was kind of hands-on on this needs to be done, that doesn't. Have you designated someone for that yet to?
Yes, so currently, David Butler, who is our park supervisor, is, helps to be responsible, and he was very involved as well. So, he, side-by-side with Nick, did a lot of the management of the landscape maintenance contracts. So, it's like basically an extension of the parks. He has, he visits those every week, lets them know where they're deficient. When they haven't done what they're supposed to do each week, they get dinged. So, we get credit for anything that wasn't done. Same is with Public Works. So, Shane Kiesau with Public Works, if the freeway artwork is not weed-free and if it's not meeting expectations, then we get credit.
I think it's awesome in time of emergency, the way that Parks and Rec and Public Works work together to get things cleaned up and taken care of, and that's a great. Brian, however you have that work, and that works great, and.
They're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Your Honor.
Two great department directors working together.
I have a question.
Okay.
Before the turn down, when the market turned down, what, how many employees were taking care of these areas? Sorry.
That's okay. We actually did do kind of a comparison of where we're at before. We, I know we are about twenty percent down from where we were at that time, and so, I think that that is approximately four, four guys on the maintenance side of the crew, and so.
We have the equipment. It's just really the manpower.
Well, we have equipment, but think about it this way, that we don't replace equipment that we're not using as much. So, we don't have all the same. We do have equipment, but it is used to the max between us, Public Works, and Water District kind of share as much as we can to be able to maximize all that equipment.
Sure.
And one of the big challenge, one of the big things with a maintenance contract is that, you know, if we have two or three guy, if we have a couple guys that are out, that's a lot of work that's happening out there. When they have a guy that's out, they can pull from multiple, you know, they have contracts all over the East Valley. They can pull people from everywhere. When we have a major event happening or something where they're not up to par, they'll bring out five, you know, five trucks of, you know, they'll have ten guys working in one area to get it cleaned up. We just don't have that amount of people to pull from.
And I was just thinking it in case of.
Yes.
This doesn't follow through.
Right.
How many did we have? That's my question.
Yeah, so David Butler, our park supervisor, did say that he thought he could probably do the same amount of work that they're doing right now with about three people, three full-time maintenance workers. But we've also explored that we might be able to do some of the general maintenance, but contract out just for tree trimming. So, tree trimming is a very labor-intensive, takes, by the time we've gone through every single facility, it's time to do them again.
Mm-huh.
So, contracting out just that part would be something we'd be exploring this spring. This is, it's only a year, it's renewed every year.
Mm-huh.
So, I think we should assume that they're going to continue to say, "We really can't do this for the amount of money that you're paying." So, this spring, we really need to be aggressively finding all of our alternatives and then bringing that back to you at that time for whether we're going to go back out for an RFP for the next, this'll get us through, a year. But if we need to go back out for RFP, or if we're going to be proposing with the budget to look at staff, or what is it that we should be doing with this amount of money?
Well, and between the four hundred thousand and this, it's like, what's the likelihood that we're going to be able to continue doing it this way?
With this amount, right.
It's just not that likely.
Right.
Sorry.
And equipment too, like you said, it's not a matter of the people.
Right.
It's a matter of your.
They have what is needed.
They can draw the people. They can also draw the equipment.
Right, right.
When it fails. We don't have the, that option.
Right. We wanted to just get some thoughts from you before I'll be working with Joel Stern to look at what that amendment is going to look like. That'll come back to you at your next meeting in a work session, and then consent agenda after that unless we learn, you know, in that setting that there's something different.
Joel, are these the only, this and the maintenance of these buildings, the cleaning, are those the only two contracts we have like that? Or are there more?
For special services?
Yeah.
Uh, we've got, I'm not sure. Heather might know better, but she's not here. But I think you've got the custodian agreement, and you do have this one. I'm not sure we have other services that we use.
So, we do have like our food service and our transportation services are kind of, I don't know that it's in the same ballpark of what you're asking. There probably are some smaller preventive maintenance ones that I know that Heather is responsible for with Public Works. These are probably two of the bigger things.
For those that haven't been on council for a long time, during the recession that we had, there was actually talk of even farming out Public Works, and a lot of cities were doing that at the time. We were able to weather that, and we are much more efficient for doing that. But a lot of, a lot of smaller cities started to do that, so let's hope we never get to that.
Any other questions or concerns with what we are looking at doing next?
I don't think so. So, you'll come back with some?
At the next, at your next work session, I'll be coming back hopefully with, we'll be sitting down and just talking. Wanted to hear what you had to say today and then come back before we negotiated all that.
It was educational for all of us, so thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Presentation and Discussion on Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Nine, Health and Sanitation, Collection of Residential Solid Waste.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, Matt Busby, Assistant City Manager. I'll be taking the lead on this item tonight. The draft ordinance that is before you is a complete rewrite of an Article nine dash five in the Apache Junction City Code, which has to do with solid waste collection. The draft that staff started with was one that was put together by the ASU students as recommendations from that big ASU Project Cities discussion and recommendation. We took aspects from other city codes and incorporated those as well in what we felt aligned with the city council's vision and mission as well as some of the other changes that you've made, like the recent update to the property maintenance codes. So, those who assisted with the draft language include Ann McCray, Brian Powell, Joel Stern, Heather Hodgman, Mike Weaver, and Larry Kurtz. So, we want to thank all of them for their work on that. What we thought we'd do tonight, since we sent it out to the city council last Monday to give you ample opportunity to review, we thought we'd go through section by section, just ensure that there's understanding, that questions are answered, if there's alternative language you'd like considered. This is a draft ordinance that should become your own since you will be the ones, if you choose to adopt it, will be the one adopting it. So, if that's all right to progress tonight that way, I'll just start there with Section nine five one with the legislative purpose. Are there any questions about the legislative purpose of this section? Looking like there's none. Jurisdiction, pretty obvious as well. I don't think, that's pretty standard language there. And definitions, we have about two pages of definitions. We did receive some, oh, yes, Councilmember Barker.
Question on garbage?
Yes, so on the next page, garbage. Go ahead.
Garbage says includes carcasses of animals, and the term garbage is also in residential solid waste therefore. And then on nine five twelve E, it prohibits that. So, it either needs to be removed from here or something.
Okay.
There was a couple things like that.
Yeah.
Like tree, tree branches and like garden-type things. I noticed the same situation.
Yes, and thank you. We do have some. These are meant to be general definitions, but when we see those things that don't, might not make sense because they're defined in one area and used differently in another area, we'll, we'll get that cleaned up. And we'll be taking notes tonight and present, you know, a new draft as soon as we can. All right, any other discussions among the definitions?
Recyclables? So, wood and bricks are considered recyclables?
Yeah, we had another question from another council member about this, and we're going to tweak some of this language as well. They had requested to remove the word brick. Again, these were general definitions of what might be considered a recyclable material. We could also add in language that just says it'll be, well, we'd want to define the generalities of what recyclable materials are, but really, it'd be up to the contractor what is acceptable and what's not, just like it is today.
And I think the words might be, should be there.
Yeah, using words like may or.
So that it is, is not, somebody doesn't say, "Well, it says right there."
Right.
That takes that away.
So, we can get a little more, we can fine-tune that message and get some of those ones that might cause confusion out of there or make people think they can recycle brick when in reality, they can't put that in the recycling containers.
And then the difference, I'm sorry, Chip.
And I do recommend that we add in a statement in this aspect on it that the contractor will provide a listing of what's acceptable and where they can go to get it. For example, at the city website or whatever.
Okay.
Just, you know, put it in there as well, even though it's not part of that definition, but it's added information to properly address the recyclables.
Yeah, so you've got recycling as defined by the contractor.
Yeah.
And, and.
And where to find it.
And, and subject to change. And subject to change if China keeps its mess going.
With the way it's going.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've heard you loud and clear on that one.
Under the rubbish and yard waste, it's like some are considered organic, but trees and shrub trimmings aren't organic.
Yeah, rubbish was brought up too, and we, we could just eliminate that whole definition, not even refer to it, because the only place we refer to rubbish is in the definition of garbage and maybe one other definition, and residential solid waste as well. So, we can definitely remove that one. And yard waste, what was the specific question on yard waste? Or just that it referred to rubbish?
It just, they were kind of both the same. One talked about organic materials and garden materials, and that's kind of what's under rubbish is tree trimmings, which are.
So, yard waste is actually used in, in the ordinance language itself, so we'll probably keep that one, but remove rubbish, so there's no confusion there. Does that sound good to y'all? All right. Other, other questions on definitions?
Yep.
Yeah, I had a question that Brian answered for me. A gentleman wanted to know about just getting rid of a lawnmower. And Brian said as long as the gasoline was out of it, that that was, so that would fall under the white goods and things like that, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, like bulk, bulk waste or.
And in this case, we should do it for the quarterly cleanup as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it sure won't fit in a garbage can.
Right.
Should we, and since we have several, I'm going to say, large lots that have all different types of animals, should we address a separate definition of manure in the aspect versus calling it in the aspect? Because there's one place in here, we're talking about how to handle, I'm going to call it the small animal waste, which is dog, cats, be putting into a plastic bag, et cetera. Whereas the, I'm going to say, the large animal manure, we're going to have a separate container for that.
Yeah, so you, are you asking to define manure specifically in definitions? So, it's clear on what that means?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that should be.
Do we still have llamas and emus? I haven't seen them for a while.
I haven't seen any either, but there's that possibility.
Or someone get a cow.
Or there is cows.
Does that include rhinos?
Yeah. No, nothing includes rhinos but you.
I would definitely say for large animals.
Animal manure.
Manure.
So, we'll, we'll come up with some example language that maybe we'll run by Vice Mayor Wilson? Does that sound okay? And then we'll add that into the definitions.
You're laughing at trash.
Any other items and definitions? There was one item brought up, yes.
I want you to define that one word in garbage.
Oful, or was it?
Awful?
Yeah, say what it means, say what it means there.
It's the entrails or the innards of animals?
Guts.
The guts?
It's parts.
It's guts. It's guts. It's a fancy word for guts, Joel.
It is.
Yeah.
I found it, I found it in one definition. It was meant for the cooking. When you cook, what do you do with a turkey carcass? I think that's what it was.
Should we move on from definitions? Unless there's other questions? All right, great. So, Section nine dash five dash four. This one simply starts it off by requiring that all residents, covered residents of this article, which includes single hall, I'm sorry, single-family residences, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, that they have to have residential solid waste that's picked up curbside by whoever the city contracts with. Any questions about this language?
I have a question, and I'm not sure we have any in here, but, you know, it talks about duplex, triplex, and fourplex. So, if it's a five-plex, they can do, it's deemed commercial. And is this per building or is it per property? So, if somebody comes in and builds a whole complex of fourplexes where they're all deemed on the same piece of property, is that, is that, are they all deemed fourplexes or are those commercial properties?
I'll invite Larry up to see if there's a differing, differentiating factor in that. I think they would all be still considered under this, this definition of fourplex.
Is that right? I would think that's like an apartment complex to me. That would be like a commercial, so if you have ten fourplexes, they're not going to, that would be treated as one. I think we're talking about individual fourplexes on a single lot. And we could clarify that, but again, I think if there's a bunch of fourplexes on one parcel, that's really an apartment complex, and that would be commercial.
I just wanted to make sure, because that's going to be.
But we could clarify that, I think, just to make sure.
Oh, it was questioned.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
If there's a, if there's a situation that they already are receiving commercial service, we're not going to go in there and, and change that. So, but we can add clarify.
Can you, can you just clarify that again for the record? Because I think we're getting a lot of confusion about that, and I want to end that one.
If, if there's multifamily housing that is currently serviced by a commercial hauler of trash, nothing's going to change for them by this ordinance or by the contract that the council considers. All right, any other questions on nine dash five dash four? The next one, vehicle and collection of equipment maintenance. This essentially is just saying that vehicles have to be clearly identified and kept in good condition. Oh, that one's actually later. Oh, no, this is that one, yeah. Good condition and repair, readily and cleanable construction. So, are the, is there any question? This is just on the contractor, we want to make sure that they aren't leaking fluids on our roads and, and all that sort of thing.
So, to say, in that one, to say good repair and in good condition, is that necessary? Because isn't that subjective? Could we just say maintained, not leaking, be watertight? The good condition and good repair to me just seem like, what does that mean? My definition of good repair might not be the same as, it just.
Yeah.
I would just say.
Joel, I don't see any issues with that legally, because it's, yeah, it's kind of vague anyway, so.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a question in the aspect on it. In we, in, if you remember, one of the fires that started in California here, just, I'm going to say, a little over a month ago now, was started because a garbage truck had, I'm going to call it a hot load, where it started burning in it, and they dumped it and started a fire from that. Do we want, I don't even know how many times that happens other than that one time. I've never heard of it before. I've never heard of it before, but I have talked to some other people, and they say that, that has happened, you know, before. Is there a way of addressing that? Or should we, how should we address it, I guess, is more than anything.
Well, we have it in here that you, there, the.
We're talking about leaking, if they leak something, they have to clean it up.
Yeah. You mean the actual hauler, if they dump a hot, a fire?
Hot load.
Oh.
They have to dump.
I mean technically, I mean, the, 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 the person who puts, they, they're, people aren't supposed to put hot coals and everything in there, so that's addressed.
I had manure catch on fire, actually, in one of mine, right. And someone alerted me that my garbage can was smoking.
It's not necessarily about hot coals either. Manure can be combustible. Just like in the heat of the sun, certain things that get in there can cause it, and the compaction is what sometimes else called.
Yeah, so the, the, currently as written, you're right, it doesn't contemplate that scenario in this draft ordinance.
I think it'd be.
I don't know how common that is of an occurrence to have, be addressed here, or.
Or what Republic's current policy is on that actual subject.
So why don't we ask them, and we'll, we'll follow up and see if it's necessary to add any language in here. Yeah.
You know, being a horse community, it, it brings a good point.
It may already be regulated by some, someone like ADEQ or, or something like that, what they can and can't do when that situation arises.
Well, I know that it started the fire in the aspect, and I don't foresee that happening here, but I would like to make sure we're covering.
Understood. Yeah. We will look, look into that.
Well, we're on this. I, and I know a lot of these questions are redundant to staff and everybody, but I always just assumed it was where I lived, that my pickup was Tuesday, Thursday, but the whole city's Tuesday, Thursday. What do all the employees do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday?
For the hauler?
For the companies, yes.
I assume they're assigned to other hauling routes. I, I don't know.
But not in this, not in our city, though? Because ours, ours are only Tuesday, Thursday, so they're doing other cities then on other days?
Tuesday, Thursday.
Depends on the neighbors.
And there's commercial, there's commercial going on all the time, but, I mean, we don't reg, we don't get into trying to worry about where all their staff are and how they.
So the old ordinance does say residential solid waste can only be picked up or collected on Tuesdays and Thursdays. This one is Monday through Friday. The draft ordinance is Monday through Friday. But as far as what the companies do, I assume they wanna maximize their, their labor, and they have them assigned elsewhere. Whether it's on commercial or, or.
That would be a question to ask on the, on the forum then, when we meet with them on, yeah, the sixth.
Right, and they have the county, and they have other areas.
Being that this one says Monday through Friday, six P M, six A M to six P M, could they break the city up in quadrants or different?
That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, so it may not be Tuesday, Thursday.
Right.
So in the response, they actually did provide a map and a, a schedule, if you will, and they did divide the city in half. And I think one was Monday, Thursday, the other was Tuesday, Friday. So there's already four days covered in which they'd be servicing the city.
And it was an example route of what, how they might do it, not knowing exactly how the contract would, would go. But, but yeah, they, they, I'm sure have other places for their employees to go, even if it's collecting commercial pickups.
Well, I don't know that. That's why I'm asking. Because they, you know, there's, there's not that many commercial accounts like there are residential, so I'm just wondering what they do with all the employees on those off days.
We'll ask them and get, get an answer. Anything else on vehicle and collection equipment? All right. Changes in market conditions. This sounds familiar because it's language is also, does it, Anna, does it mirror the language in the contract, the proposed contract, or is it just similar? Do you remember the market conditions? I think, well, it's very similar, if not exactly.
I think it's, I think it's pretty close.
I have a question on this one.
Yeah.
And it says towards the end, and update the pricings to city accordingly. What does that mean? Does that mean that we feel like updating it? What does that mean?
Yeah, so the, oh, go ahead, Anna.
So this could go either way. If the recycling market improves, the city, along with Republic Services, could revisit recycling rates to our customers, to our residents, in which that rate could potentially be lowered at some point, again, if the recycling market were to improve. If the recycling market continues to worsen, Republic may come to the city and just say, it's cost prohibitive for us to even process this particular recycling product. So they could either ask, request in writing to cease the processing or acceptance of that certain recycling product, or B, they could say, you know, we need to request a increase in rates for this reason, along with justification. Again, it's a, on recycling. Again, it's a partnership. City will work through Republic on these and other like issues. It can't just be them coming to us and saying, we are gonna up the price for this and that.
Just wanna make sure that that doesn't give them permission to do that.
Right. And so the, the key of this section is probably this last sentence that I just highlighted, which is any action, it's, it's a partnership, it's a contractual relationship. We have to be in agreement on how to move forward on things, especially when there's big market conditions that disrupt their, their, you know, company's world. We, we have to talk about it.
So I have a question. In the case of a change, who's responsible for the notice of changes? And if it's the collector, does the city get to review it as well? Or is there going to be something that comes out jointly with Republic and the city so people can understand that, you know, we know about it, or have we not gotten there yet?
Well, I, I would assume that in partnership, we'll be talking to each other, that any change to the contract in changed market conditions, a request from them would come to us to change it. Now, if we saw some condition where it's like lowering a price.
I think it would, that would be a joint effort, just like any communication. If the contract and this ordinance moves forward with your approval, there's gonna be a huge public education, information efforts and outreach in order to get the word out on the who, when, what of transition. And then beyond that, we're gonna want to help Republic get those key messages across. For instance, if there's schedule changes because of a holiday, those types of things. If there's changes that, if there's a market disruption or whatnot, and a recycling, acceptable recycling items, we're certainly gonna help Republic get that out there. I think part of the contract oversight, which we may get to a little bit later, part of that will be the city is planning on having a web page in their website dedicated to trash and recycling, to have Republic's information, the schedules, anything of that sort that we can help get out, along with social media venues as well. I do know that in the beginning for the public education, that Republic Services will be mailing all of the residents, their options and services, pricing, preparation of garbage, acceptable items of recycling and all that. So the city certainly will mirror those efforts and have that as part of their website and social media avenues and all that.
Will we be doing mailings, like Gail had just asked? Say there's a big change that says quite an increase in recycling, or we're not gonna do recycling anymore or whatever. Would the city be responsible for doing a mailing? They gonna do the mailing? Would there be a mailing? That's a good question that she.
So Republic would be responsible for communication with their customers. However, again, the city would definitely assist in that effort. And we could talk about that further, when those situations came up, on how best to communicate that.
Mailings are costly, so if it is on the city, then we, it's something to think about.
With the local newspapers as well, so.
Yeah, I would envision our typical communication channels, people that are used to hearing city things. And then Republic, through their typical communication channels, channels directly to the customers.
And I think, and understanding that this is just the ordinance piece of it, not the mechanics piece of it. It's still, I think, a huge concern to a lot of people, like, who do I complain to? Do I complain to the city? Do I complain here? And I know that we'll have further discussions on that, but I think it's really important that somehow something is designated, that it shows the city and Republic were behind this, not just one or the others, so that the citizens know that we're watching what's happening.
Absolutely. Any other questions on changes in market conditions, section nine dash five dash six? All right. Nine, five, seven, residential solid waste collection requirements. This is where it mentions that they're required to have weekly solid waste collection service, provided through the contractor with the city. And also in section B there, it talks about those contracts, which are very few, that are in place with HOAs, can remain in effect, but when those contracts are up, people need to transition to the, the Republic pricing.
We had talked before about, what if, and I've had a neighbor that did this, little, they produced a little amount of trash, they just come down and put theirs in my receptacle. How will we deal with that, with the, maybe the elderly person that doesn't produce a lot of trash, or they recycle, so they produce a lot? Now, how are we gonna do that? And then how would we enforce it on somebody? That's a concern.
Yeah, so as the ordinance is written, and now also as the contract and the RFP was laid out, every resident that has a single-family home is in a duplex, is in a triplex, or a fourplex, all of those residences have to pay their share, their portion, and they have solid waste collection service. And so Republic, if they, Anna, you probably explain it best, but when there are people that either aren't paying their bill or refuse to participate, there, there's a process laid out later in the ordinance that, that we go through.
So Republic Services has a license with the United States Postal Service, in which they have a list of residential properties that fit the single-family home, duplex, triplex, and fourplexes in the city. So upon a word of contract, they will, again, mail out all of the service options to all of the residents. And then thirty days after that, those residential properties, thirty, excuse me, thirty days after the receptacles are delivered to each of those addresses, a bill will be issued, and within thirty days, that first quarter's fee is due. So this is when the city will begin meeting, well, will begin meeting with them prior to that, but we will be meeting with them regularly to check on the number of subscribers, type of service, and to follow up. We certainly wanna gain voluntary compliance, but you have to remember that this RFP was issued. The assumption was that there was a hundred percent participation, and that's why we get the low rate. The ten dollars and seventy-one cents is a far cry from what people are paying today for solid waste services. So that was the assumption, the hundred percent participation rate. So again, you know, the city's gonna work with Republic to gain that, the voluntary compliance. And of course, if the solid waste generator doesn't produce enough solid waste to put out their canister twice a week, they don't have to. There's nothing stating that they have to put the can out twice a week. However, that's the assumption, is that the hundred percent participation, those who produce solid waste, however, whatever amount, they're sharing in that cost, and that's what keeps the rates low.
That they're forced to pay. And that's, I think, the biggest, one of the biggest problems that we are hearing from the public is that, that right there. And I kinda struggle with that one, too, because I, I, I just struggle with, with, you know, telling an individual that they have to do that when they, to me, it's not an issue. I don't mind paying the bill for somebody that produces little or nothing, and.
Well, I'd like to say, you know, in other cities that have their own trash, Mesa, Tempe, it's part of your sewer bill. There's, there's no option whether you're there six months out of the year or two months out of the year. When you're paying your sewer water and garbage bill, it's all in one. It's, and unfortunately, that's a cost of living, and I understand that, you know, this will be a burden for some people, but for the betterment of the entire city, it's kind of that ouch that we have to put out there.
And I would just point back to legislative purpose. For as many as situations might be like that, there's probably twice as many as those who just don't wanna play, pay, but they do produce solid waste.
And they store it in the yard.
Throw it in their backyard, or they burn it, or they, they don't throw it away. And then it becomes an impact on their neighbors and some bigger problems like described in this, this legislative purpose, so. And with some, again, the whole reason behind this is a lot of the efforts to clean up properties around Apache Junction, maintain a certain standard of living, and look and feel the community, a real positive impact that that has, so.
So we're not providing the opportunity to produce a letter to say, hey, I take mine down to Joe's house, and Joe say, you know, I can, I verify that, you know, Sally's bringing her trash and putting it in my receptacle, and I'm paying the bill, so.
No, no.
Right, we don't.
Okay, I got a question in, in this section, and it also flows over to nine, five, twelve in the aspect on it.
And are you nine, five, seven, or nine, five, eight now? Did you move on there?
Nine, five, eight.
Okay. Can I ask if there's anyone, other questions in nine, five, seven still?
I, I just wanted to know, failure to subscribe, what action are we having in place?
Yeah, so that, that's described at the end of the notes of violations and what triggers that. And we are always gonna seek compliance first and try to people, get people, but then there's a process like any code compliance type issue that we'll go through with the person, and that's described at the end.
I thought we were already on eight, three, two.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. We're just, that's why I asked, but, but we are now, because I think that was the last question. So Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Robin? Do you remember way back when, when the sewer dristic was forming? And they were saying that if you didn't pay your sewer bill, they could seize your home?
They would lean your home. They would lean on your home.
Yeah. That was.
Okay, in, well, eight, B, number six. And it says, waste from small animals or pets shall be placed in a plastic bag, secured and, and placed in a solid waste receptacle. And of course, this is small animals in the aspect on it. And I, I wanna make sure that, you know, this is something that is, because it's, you know, we repeat going into this and some other places where we don't say this, where this is acceptable in the aspect on it. It is acceptable to put it in there, but we're talking only about small animal or pet. What is the definition of a small animal versus a large animal? You can have a dog that will weigh well over a hundred pounds, stands so high, you know, and again, I can have a pet, a pet.
Pig.
Well, pet pig, pet. Goat. So we're building a little bit of a, I would say, a catch word here, and now it becomes the definition of what is.
Right, and I don't know if, if you're thinking that'd create a problem by people putting too much of this waste from small animals. I mean, this, this is talking about excrement. Is it dog poop, cat poop, putting in a bag and throw it into the, the container, right? So if you'd like us to work on some further clarification here, we, we certainly can. But that's what this contemplates right here, is that, that, you know, when you're going through a neighborhood, you need to pick up your dog poop, tie it, and, and throw it in the garbage, so. But Larry, you, you had something to add?
Your Honor, Council, we do have definitions in the zoning code, so we already have definitions of what a small animal is and a large animal. So you could say, as defined in the zoning code, or you could actually put them back in this. We could just take the zoning code definitions and have a new atom in the front of what large animal versus small animal waste is. So rather than try to redefine it or re, we've already defined it in the zoning code, and already went through a lot of, I'm sure, discussion many moons ago about what is a small animal and all that. So that might simplify it.
Vice Mayor, do you have a preference, you think, just hearing that now, if you'd like it here, or just reference to the place it already is in the code?
Reference would be okay in that aspect on it. I, you know, it, but again, what I'm worried about is the definition and how it is going to be interpreted. We have a miniature horse that my wife, she got, you can't ride it. You know, yes, he is trained to be a service animal, but is that a small animal? Is it a pet? Or is it, you know, classified as a large animal in the aspect? So you can see where I'm going with the aspect. When we put words in here, small animals or pets in the aspects on it. And I wanna make sure that we're not going to create a problem where a neighbor says they have where a neighbor says they have a miniature, excuse me, a donkey in the aspect on it. And suddenly again, weighs maybe 35 pounds. And now we're saying, no, that's, the one neighbor says it's a pet, the other one says it's a large animal. So you see where I'm worried about in the aspect of getting conflicts established.
So they, they may be worried in seeing them, how they bag it, or what they put in, don't put in the receptacle, or just the definition of what a small pet is because it's in this.
Why does, why do we need that wording at all? I mean, every now and then OfficeMax has a sale, and they give you a big paper bag when you come in. Anything you can fit in that bag is 20% off. So why not anything you can fit in your dumpster that's less than 200 pounds?
Yeah, so this is just saying, it should be in a bag. That's what this is saying.
And then they're going to search.
Dump the litter box into the.
No one's going to search this.
That, that's all it's saying. It should be bagged. That's all this part is saying.
Don't take your neighbor off.
Yeah. We're always going to seek compliance first, education first, all that.
Be placed in a bag if they're in this trash container.
You know, sometimes they define, like you said, small, I know, right, we're talking about waste, and we're not talking about the actual animal, but as far as the definition of small animal or pet, sometimes they go by weight. Animal weighing 75 pounds or less, animal weighing 50 pounds or less. Maybe that would be a way to clarify a little bit better, I don't know.
We'll share with the city council what the reference is in the code and see if that's.
And the Arizona Administrative Code also defines small and large animals. And there is a weight limit, 75 pounds or under is considered small, 75 pounds and over is considered large, so.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that it go in this code. Otherwise, there's going to be some confusion. People won't be able to find the zoning code ordinance. So I think you should actually have that definition if you want it.
The weight limit?
Whatever definition you want should be in this code.
We'll mimic what we already have in the other places in the code and see if you're all right with that. Yeah, because we define them in other places, the code, the code, small animal.
So then a dog over 75 pounds is not a pet or a small animal by definition.
Right. So we'll, it will bring back the definition, like Larry said, that's already been worked through many times with former councils, and we'll see if you're happy with that, that definition.
But whether or not it's a large animal, in that case, because we had Newfoundland's, we had, which, you know, my Newfoundland was 160 pounds. But, well, my rhino was like 3,000 pounds. But, you know, whether or not it was deemed a large animal or a small animal, we still just put it in the receptacle because that's what we did.
Well, it says pets.
Yeah.
It says small animal or pets. So your Newfoundland was a pet.
And we're going to address the issue of manure, correct? About, and Republic, or whoever we're going to have a contract with, will be addressing that as far as having a separate receptacle?
Correct.
Where shall we put the poop?
We're not even talking trash, we're talking poop.
Whose poop goes in the trash?
Are there, for the, and again, this section of preparing solid waste, it's to have some standard out there. So if there is major problems that Republic can't deal with their customer, they keep putting stuff that is hazardous in nature, or dangerous for their trucks or employees, it's a way to start educating people, seek compliance first, and.
Too much hopeful.
Yeah, exactly. Unbagged, hopeful. Are there any other questions on preparation of solid waste?
I have one on, well, trash to be repaired, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's where we are.
Okay.
D.
On number, yeah, D, on number, what, D? Number nine, where it's talking about the century plants and cacti and similar, are not going to, they have to be in a cardboard box. In the neighborhood cleanups that we've done, that's always been a major portion of what we have to clean up for people. So how can they say that's not acceptable? Because typically, in other cities, when they come out for the bulk trash pickup, you know, there's forklifts, there's, they're prepared to pick up sharp things. And so how, being in the desert, how can we eliminate these items?
Where are you, Gail?
On number nine.
Number nine.
So that doesn't prohibit those items from being picked up. It's just requiring that they are placed in a cardboard box by the resident wishing to dispose of it when they set it out on their property.
And that ain't going to happen. I'll just, I, I mean.
It's there to protect the workers.
And I understand that, but, you know, it's like broken wood fence slats or things with, that you could get nails or something else in. I mean, to eliminate something that is a common thing here and a common problem. I mean, we've picked up, you know, the big prickly pear.
So I think.
Ears with spines and that, you know, with rakes. That's what you have to do. I, I don't see how we can eliminate that.
And I, the intent is not to eliminate the collection of these things?
Yeah, but it's not going to go in a box either. I, I mean, that's just reality. It's not going to.
Again, it's to set standards, though, for residents to prepare their bulk trash in a way that protects the employees that are there picking it up.
So they, so it's out on the curb, no, and this is the thing, it's out on the curb for bulk pickup, and they don't take it. Then what?
Right, so for example, maybe, maybe they left nine car batteries on the sidewalk. And they're hazardous materials, right? They're not going to collect it.
No, I agree with that.
Right.
But a century plant and cactus is something that is very familiar in all of our landscaping around here. And to say that if they're going to put it in a box, it's not going to happen.
But how would the, my question is then, how would the people pick it up? It talks about loose leaves and grass, too, that are unbagged. How are these guys with the trash, how are they going to come and pick up a cactus if it's not contained?
Right.
Are they going to pick it up with gloves in their hands? I mean, how would they do it?
Well, no, the leaves and grass, it says, is not acceptable if they're loose. So that answers that.
Right, so if it's bagged.
You know, I just don't want it being messy. But if they didn't have, because a lot of people, you know, they don't have the ability to go find a box or 40 boxes to put all of their century plant in or their cactus. So will we have an alternative, or what's going to happen if it's left there?
So we have community service workers now. So again, not saying we have all the answers to everything. We'll see how this goes, and we hope our residents will have interaction and call us, and we'll tell them the best way to package this new service. This is new to us. But let's say they do just leave it out. We have community service workers that go on the right of way and can come scoop that up, and we would have to do so.
And they can come pick it up, and that's what I'm saying.
Right.
So why can't Republic pick it up? That's just, I guess because of the number of neighborhood cleanups I've been on, and it's an issue. Because people just leave it pile up. And, you know, with a manure rake, that was always my favorite for picking them up. You can do it.
So there's also the different, difficult thing about talking about the ordinance and the contract, because they had a proposal for bulk trash as an alternate service. And they, they described what bulk trash they would accept and wouldn't accept, and how they would need to have some standards so they can quickly do that service once a month, right?
Yeah.
And so we were trying to match up and work with them on what this looked like and how they could do it, given their current setup, so.
Yeah, I just don't want us not to have something in place. So, because of some of the complaints I've heard about the bulk trash pickup, it's going to be sitting out there for a week beforehand. And, you know, if it doesn't get picked up, then how long is it going to sit there before it's taken care of? That's my concern.
So now have, do they use one person to pick these things up? Do they have one guy that comes on the truck? Or like Chip had suggested, can there be a separate bin, like with the manure for these type of things or something? If they're worried about it being contained, and I can see why they would want a cactus contained, especially if it's a one guy that's running the truck to come get or whatever.
Right, so, so this gets back to the RFP language. We asked them to propose how they would do bulk trash. They proposed they'd do it this way, and the city council said, okay, we like that, go ahead and do it. So this matches up how they proposed to do bulk trash. So if there's scenarios where someone, say, they have a huge cleanup of a cactus in their backyard, and they don't do it, as Republic can reasonably haul it away, it's probably going to stay on the sidewalk, and we're going to have to figure it out, either with the residents through code of compliance, or with.
And even a saguaro.
Court workers.
You know, can you imagine trying to put saguaro chunks into boxes? I mean, it's just kind of a.
Maybe cactus shouldn't be part of the bulk pickup.
Well, one person.
Yeah, we could eliminate that.
Maybe they should only be.
Yeah, I don't think any residents.
And they can take them themselves.
Get a choy out there.
Yeah.
Take them out of there.
They also wouldn't have to use the bulk pickup. They have the pre-dump week, they can, all sorts of different ways.
Free dump week?
Oh, yeah, that, that falls under a separate ordinance or contract.
They're increasing it, I thought.
With the landfill.
Is there a possibility of putting and adding in here, is if you have situations like this, to call Republic on how to properly, or.
Dispose of.
Dispose of this, and if they say they can't take it, but they can say, but you can do this, or this, or this, or however.
Yeah.
Because I can see, you know, that being a question.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Dead stuff, yeah.
Okay. Any other items on that?
Yeah, on number eight, where it says disposable, or, we're on D. I'm just pumping up one from what Gail was talking about, unwanted material resulting from construction. What is unwanted material?
Well, just whatever they're trying to get rid of. So the whatever, I think that would be defined by the resident, some they're trying to dispose of. We could, we could work on that language if that's, I think that'd be defined by the person who's trying to get rid of it.
Get rid of it.
Yeah.
Scraps.
They're trying to get rid of it.
Yeah, stucco, anything resulting from construction.
Scrap wood.
Stucco, sheet rock.
You're building, and it's good, you're keeping it.
But if you'd like us to work on that, we can, we can find some examples we can add in there. I don't know if we could do an exhaustive list in here, because who knows? Right, from a construction project, what.
It just seems vague.
Yeah.
I might want the material that they consider unwanted, you know, what's I want that it's.
And you probably wouldn't be trying to dispose of it.
Right there.
Right. So this is all about trying to find what people can and can't dispose of. So if you wanted it, you probably wouldn't be trying to dispose of it, right? All right, any further questions there? If not, we'll go to spilling of solid waste during transport.
This is what that question was, was mentioned.
Okay, can you remind me, Vice Mayor, what, what the question was you had about?
That was talking about where they dumped the load that was hot and started the fire.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That, that was actually, I didn't write my note out.
Okay.
But, I mean, if, if, if there's a truck, I'm just, if there's a truck driving down, a car driving down the road or whatever, and whatever, it starts on fire, wouldn't that be the same scenario?
Happens today.
Of, and if it started a grass fire or something? I mean, wouldn't that fall under insurance and on the, on the, on the individual or the truck hauler?
Well, what they did was they dumped the load.
They have to.
They pulled off the side of the road and dumped the load.
That's illegal, and that's on them.
And that would be.
That's why they're burning up.
There's got to be, I'm, I'm, I'm just, the reason I'm asking is there's got to be something that says that you can't do that anyway.
Yeah, and that's, I referenced earlier, maybe there's some, some regulations from Arizona Department of Environmental Quality that regulates trash haulers, you know, they may address that. So we were going to follow up and get back with you on that one, yeah. Because I'm sure there's something in state law that already prohibits, you know, or whatever. We want to clarify.
Let's hope there is.
Yeah. Move on to nine five ten? Use someone else's receptacle? Any questions about this language?
I just disagree with it. I just don't, I just disagree with, yeah.
Even with permission?
Yeah, I just disagree with that.
Yeah, so this is your chance to offer alternative language or something you'd like to see different? Because I could envision a situation where a neighbor is complaining to us that their neighbor keeps putting garbage in their container, and they don't want them to. So there has to be a standard of some sort to cover scenarios. If you'd like to say unless they provide written permission or something like that, this is your time to discuss that with you yourselves.
The only, I mean, that, that scenario, the reason that we can get such low costs is because we're having every residential property pay the fee. And if we start diluting the pool, that just will increase the cost that everybody else is going to have to share, so.
I think it would be few and far between that people could get a letter of permission from a neighbor. I think we'd, maybe a handful of people at best if it were to happen, but at least it would cover them from being, going after, excuse me for the terminology, a little elderly lady that doesn't produce trash. I just can't see doing that.
Well, I'm, I'm close with my neighbors now, and if I, you know, Christmas time, I'm really full, and they have room. I ask them, and they let me. I, I don't think the city's interested in going after people in that scenario. But if you feel that this scares you because of that scenario, that we would come after, then, you know.
I think there's enough service organizations around that if that becomes an issue, just like cleaning up the elderly's yards, you know, we can take care, we'll find a group to take.
If we're going to allow people to do it, I think it should be clarified. If the council says that we're not going to allow it under any circumstances, then leave it alone. But if we are going to allow it, I think it should be in there.
As soon as you put it in there.
You'll get more people.
You will have 150 people come out of the woodwork and say, oh, I don't use much trash, so I'll just go with you.
Everyone will not want to use it.
You, you've opened the door to increase prices right away on everybody else.
Well, they'd have to have a letter from the Thursday Mary future.
And Councilmember Rizzi, if I may, not only you risk more and more people coming out of the woodwork with these letters, Joel, at what point then does this nullify the contract or even the RFP as it's written? They're expecting, you know, 100% participation up to 11,000 homes. And at what point does 200 people with written permission to share receptacles start to pose a risk to the whole contract?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Council, if you change the RFP, then you might have to go out and rebid it. So this would change the dollars. The Republic might say, I'm sorry, we can't accept that.
And that simple suggestion, I kind of said in jest, wasn't in terms of sharing and not paying for your service. But I, what I see this as is those who have a full container, who need to put an extra bag in their neighbor's yard, right? Or their neighbor's.
Not yard.
Their receptacle, right?
That brings another issue, because it says that you're not allowed to, if once your receptacle's full, you can't set an extra next to it, so.
But, but the other alternative scenario I contemplated was those who do have neighbors that do it without permission. So how are we going to address them, help them on the opposite side? So to have the standard up front allows for us to, when the issue's brought to our attention, it's probably a pretty severe issue at that point, of someone having unwanted garbage in their containers from a neighbor that they don't know, you know, whatever the scenario might be. So that's why we thought this was important.
Yeah, it would only be used if somebody complained that their neighbor or whomever was using their container. Otherwise, if they say, yeah, sure, dump your, yeah, go for it, then they're not going to complain.
But it's not, because it says that if they have an address that is generating trash or that is a single-family residence that doesn't have a, that isn't paying the bill. So it isn't just a matter of a complaint. Prior to this, it's, we already talked about how they're going to have people comply. They have their address, you're a single-family resident, or you, you're following that residence, and you're not paying the bill, or you don't have trash service. So it isn't just a matter of a complaint.
I didn't say that. I meant a person with service who has a full trash can, wants to put that extra bag next door at the person who also has full service, as long as the neighbor doesn't care, no complaint, no problem.
Yeah, we can keep looking at it, but I do think this is a fundamental question for me in terms of why we did this and why we went out. Did we want to have the vision that you said in some of your work sessions that we did two years ago about updating the building code, or updating the zoning code, or updating? And this was one of the ones that we've worked on for the last couple of years to encourage at the lowest cost possible, everyone to participate in trash service. We have photo after photo after photo of your co-compliant staff trying to track down and deal with folks who don't want to do trash. And we are a city that does not require trash service. So this comes down fundamentally, and if you, it's okay. It's just, this was, this was what we saw in the RFP to, to help drive, drive the price down. We can, we can keep looking at other options, but I don't. We can keep looking at other options, but I don't know.
No, this clause just says that everybody who has a residence will pay for their service. It doesn't say that at Christmas time or whatever, if I'm full, it doesn't mean I can't go to my neighbor and say, can I please put my garbage in yours? That's not what this clause is all about. It's just saying that every residence or duplex or whatever.
Fourplex, fourplex, yeah.
Fourplex will have coverage or will have, pay for service. Let's keep going, guys.
Okay. Nine, five, eleven, general resident responsibilities. Any questions on this one? Yes, Councilmember.
This is the one. Oh, the responsible party shall. Does this mean that the landlord of a twoplex, fourplex, what have you, is responsible for the trash that their rent or leasing, et cetera, their subscription or can they build it into contracts? What does this mean specifically?
Right, so responsible party is defined above. And it's, so that usually would be done through the tenant landlord agreement, right? So in some cases, the tenants are responsible through a contract with their landlord to pay for those services. Others, and that's why we phrased it that way. The responsible party shall.
Because you, in having the responsibility, the responsible party being responsible for providing it, it sounds like contract or no contract, that party's going to be providing that to me.
And so up in the definitions, the responsible party, any person, owner, occupant, lessor, lessy, manager, licensee, tenant, inhabitant, or other person having care and control over a structure or parcel of land that generates a solid waste or recycling pair. So we contemplated, yeah, that if the contract required the tenant to be the direct responsible party with the contractor of solid waste collection, it would be them. If it was the landlord, which that is, sometimes they just take care of all the utilities, including collection, it would be them. They'd be, yeah.
It was just a clarification because it was very broad.
But ultimately, because if you have an owner of a building, a fourplex, let's say, and they have, they collect rent, ultimately, they're responsible for what goes on in their building in all aspects, whether it's garbage pickup, whether it's fire safety, whatever it might be. They might have it in their contract, their lease arrangement, that tenant will pay for garbage and everything. But if the tenant doesn't, the property is who would be ultimately responsible, correct?
Ultimately, it would lie with the property owner.
That's the same thing with electricity and the aspect on it in a trap, a fourplex.
Right.
If every unit is paying for their own electric bill, it's responsibility of the tenant in the aspect on it. And that's where I think this would be the same aspects on it.
Yeah, and some fourplexes owner may set it up differently. They may have the tenants all have their own, so.
They may have a dumpster.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what brings a lot of these questions, it's obviously staff has worked hard on this and they've worked with the company and they've done a lot of work to put these things together. And I, I think a lot of these questions come from the calls and getting beat up from the public. We, you know, we've taken a beating for a period of time. And so it's not, it's nothing personal. It's not that we're trying to pick it apart, but we're kind of, we just want to try to get it as right as we can. Obviously, as this goes on, if we go forward with it and this gets approved or passed, it'll evolve. We'll learn as we go and probably make changes as we go, but we do have a lot of questions. And so I think it can also, you know, staff can sometimes feel like we're beating up on them when we're not. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am.
Thank you.
You know, we need a little levity there, right? I mean, we're talking garbage here, so.
And like I said in the beginning, this is ultimately, you are the deciders in how you want it written and that's why we're going through it step by step. And if you have any clarifying language you'd like added or changes, you know, that's what we're doing these, you know, tonight in a future work session as well. Further comments on nine, five, eleven? Nine, five, twelve is definitions of what hazardous waste is? Any, yes?
Okay, I'm gonna ask the question, I asked the specific question on the dead animals and and the, I would say, that's E and F on it. And Anna, did you find anything out on what?
So I think the question is, as you questioned in E, it says dead animals and livestock may not be placed in plastic bags tied and placed in a solid waste receptacle. So I did a little sleuthing and, like I said, the Arizona Administrative Code allows for that, but again, they define the small animals under the weight of seventy-five pounds. That is acceptable. As for the dead animals in the public right-of-way, there's nothing that will change with this written as it is than how it's administered now. Calls to the police department are made and animal control, and sometimes I believe even public work staff goes and removes animals out of the right-of-way. So nothing is meant to change there. I think we had talked about instead of the wording shall only be disposed in a manner directed by the city's paws and claws center of the police department for those large, for the dead animals and livestock, we thought about maybe nuancing the language to say for questions on how to dispose of an animal, residents may call paws and claws as a resource on how to best dispose of the animal based on the type. Again, we can look at adding the word large in there, large, dead animals and livestock, maybe even weighing in excess of seventy-five pounds or whatever the current zoning ordinance states, may not be placed in those plastic bags to give some kind of differentiation there if you prefer.
And as Joel, as Larry and Larry suggested, we'll use the current code language in the next draft. It'll be, the definitions being here, we'll make sure they match with, you know, where we use that large animal or whatever it might be, that definition.
You get the discrepancy, like Chip had said, like, okay, so pot-bellied pig, it would fit, it's small. It's, you know, is it lives, some people call it livestock, some people, is it a pet or is it, you know, is it the weight or is it the name? He's a pig, so he's livestock, but he's a pet and he's under seventy-five pounds, so I think that's what Chip was talking about earlier.
And that's where I was going in this aspect on it. And then also, it's, I don't want to, I'm gonna say, and we had already talked about this in the aspect on this, through the recommendation that we say that they call for advice on how to handle. But I don't want the city paws and claws to feel that, or the people to think that they're the ones that are gonna handle it. Because the way this is currently worded, you know, that's the way I interpret that, that I have a dead dog, I'm calling paws and claws and I expect them to come out and pick the animal up and take it.
And that is not the intent.
That's right.
Right.
And the same thing for, and I guess I broke the law many, many times because if there's a dead rabbit out in front of my house, I've picked that son of a gun up. Unfortunately, I put it in a plastic bag and I put it into the trash. Because first off, I didn't want to have the odor of that dead animal in my trash container. And I don't want coyotes around because I do have other animals around. And, yes, including chickens. And, you know, I still think the idea of saying not in a plastic bag, I have a problem with that because if they die and you're putting them in the trash container in the middle of the summer when it's a hundred and ten degrees outside and you have to wait four days for trash service, that is gonna be a very odorous container and it's gonna take a long time to get that odor out. It's not gonna just get out by scrubbing it out because it's still gonna be there.
Well, that's also part of the ordinance too. It says that the responsible party is responsible for keeping it clean and sanitary, so it does create another issue.
Yeah, we'll provide some.
How do people do dead animals in our ordinance now?
Put them in bags.
I think common sense, you know, field mouse in a trap, yes. Family dog, no. You know, I mean, people aren't gonna throw their family dog in the trash can. I mean, God knows I wouldn't. I mean, surely there are a few rotten apples out there, but for crying out loud. I mean, I'm pretty sure if anybody would interpret that, I just don't see them throwing, you know, large domesticated animals in their trash can.
So we'll provide some clarifying language and see if it's more acceptable.
On large lots, they do. You have goats, you have pigs, you have coyotes. There are different scenarios for people that live on large lots than people that live in small neighborhoods.
And I'll agree with Robert in the aspect on it, yes. You know, the unfortunate thing is we lost a very faithful dog just this past week in the aspect on it. My wife would go through the ceiling if I turned around and put it into a dumpster in the aspect on it. But, you know, it's, it needs to be covered in the aspect of how to address it in the aspect on it. And yes, I definitely agree with making not only E but also F in the aspect of saying that, you know, you call for advice on what to do in the aspect on it.
We will do that.
Because if you can dispose of that rabbit in front of your house, I don't want someone coming and putting me on handcuffs and hauling me away because I've disposed of a rabbit and dead in front of my house.
And they couldn't buy this ordinance either, so, but I understand your point. We'll provide language. Any further comments or questions on hazardous waste? If not, section nine, five, thirteen, it's all about permitted days and hours of collection, fairly similar to what we have, except now it'll be Monday through Friday because they'll have these different areas of town that they'll service on other days, so. There's no questions on that. We'll move on to nine, five, fourteen for the receptacles.
I have a question on this.
Yes.
Three.
B three?
Yeah. The storage of them, I would think we could add this side of the house to this, that they don't have to be, I mean, many people don't have a fence and they don't want to put them in the back of the house, for goodness sake. So at least let them put them on the side.
I think we can come up with language for that. I know that we, one of the goals that the mayor, we had noticed over time over off Winchester and some other areas, it does make a difference if it's out on the street all the time versus on the side. And so I think if we can get it.
To be moved back to wherever they're stored, but I don't, I certainly think people need to have the option of putting it to the side in their garage behind a fence if they have one, but surely they don't have to build a decorative wall just for their silly garbage can. I mean, come on, let's be sensible.
I think we can come up with language for sure on that, right, Anna?
Yes, and we've already have some worked up, so we'll share it the next review.
I love you had this same question over the weekend about.
And I wanted to address that one as well in the aspect on it. I've made a, I'm gonna say, an informal survey of around the large lot community. And yes, I've seen them sitting in front of the house. I've seen them in a carport. I've seen them beside the house. I've seen them in a, I'll say, an area that's adjacent, behind a fence adjacent to the gate, so it's easy for them to remove. In fact, one of my neighbors just down the street from me has it setting out close to the right-of-way. It's actually on their property. He's in a wheelchair, electric wheelchair, and comes out, I'll say, about twice a week. You'll see him coming out with trash, throwing it in the trash container and then grabbing a hold of it and, I'll say, every time he's pulling it out, it's hard for him to pull it out because it's not something that's easily hauled with a electric wheelchair. So I think that we need to make sure that we word this to try to take into account all possibilities. You know, I agree not having them on the street, but, you know, in the aspect of having them into an area. I asked the question about the idea of building a block enclosed area to put the trash container in my front yard adjacent to the front of the house, close to the street, and was told that that's considered a structure and I'd need to have a permit and they wouldn't be allowed. So, again, I think we need to look at that situation and word it so that we can, I'm gonna say, have that ability. I know one person fairly that I saw has planted, unfortunately, oleanders around the area and that's where their trash containers are behind, but they're visible from the street. And on my property, there's nowhere on my property that I can store a trash container where neighbors cannot see it or be seen from the street. So that's another part of the problem in the aspect on it. Because if I put it in the very back part of it, the neighbor behind me can see it. The neighbors on either side of me can see it. It's, I just have open fencing around my property. I don't have a block wall and I don't like to have block walls. And I don't want to build one just to hide a trash container.
I will offer up that, like, things like screening and building walls or keeping in the garage or in the backyard, it's all about aesthetics, right? So I know my neighborhood would look very different if everyone put it on the side of their house. I live in Renaissance Point and if they're all bright blue containers on the outside, it's gonna be a really different neighborhood. So I just offer that up, that whatever you do, just know that people will push it to that limit. And there's about ten or twelve thousand units that this contract covers. But I think we can work through some language and some considerations for your approval.
But as we, but as we talked, that, this is part of it, that it would have to be complaint-driven. There's not gonna be anybody out there looking to say, oh, Johnny's over there doing it or has got it in the wrong spot. It's gonna have to be a neighbor or somebody else who's gonna complain that it's.
See, I disagree with that.
But I don't want the city to be in the middle where you got a feud between two neighbors.
I know.
And that will happen.
Yeah, that happens.
The large lot areas are different. You know, I totally agree.
And we may need to have something to differentiate because a lot of people have the no-climb-horse fencing all the way around rather than solid fencing. So it may need to be different for the large lots. But I disagree with what Councilmember Struble just said about not having it in writing because if it isn't clarified, people can, it's, the ordinance says this, so it can be enforced. And if it isn't clarified to have a.
So you, I didn't say, what did you think I said?
I'm moving on.
Well, I.
I have another question.
Well, no, I, I didn't, I don't have a problem with the language, so I don't know it. I just said it's gonna be complaint-driven if there's gonna be a problem, so.
If there's an enforcement issue, that's, that was my comment. That's what my comment was related to, so.
So Councilmember Wilson, or Vice Mayor Wilson, I'm sorry. So what I'm gathering is that a lot of the issues you have with this kind of all pertain to the large horse property lots, the desert living where they're just kind of in the open. And so that's, those are the big primary issues. Am I reading you right there, Chip?
There's a lot of them, yes, in that aspect on it, the wording in the aspect on it. For, well, like this, is storage in the aspect on it. Yes, if I was in a, you know, in a subdivision and had a garage, yes, I can see where it could be in the garage, but I don't have a garage.
Right, right, right. A lot of those places don't. And they don't have the block wall, like in my subdivision, I can put it on my fence or I can do things with it that is out of sight. But in your situation, you can't. And there's probably a lot of people around where you live are in the same situation you are. So if we can just kind of, I guess, single out or address the desert living type of acre, quarter, or horse property areas, that, I think that should take care of a lot of the concerns that we're having.
So I see two different options, either, like Councilmember Barker was saying, at least a minimum standard for everyone to the side of the house or. or going with the code as is, or we come up with some, some other language that has to do with large lots. I don't know, Joel, that was one of my questions, can you?
Well, it sounds, it sounds like, well, one council member, or maybe two, wants to do a variation between large versus small lots. And, you know, you can start doing that, but once you start making exceptions, there's going to be exception after exception, and it could be done, but I'm not sure the company wants to have those kind of exceptions. It wasn't in the RFP, I'm pretty sure, so.
Company won't care as long as it gets to the curb, right?
This is the important part of the ordinance, saying that your trash can can't be visible, and it has to be screened. Where was it? That it has to be screened behind a decorative wall or something. I think I can see it getting into an issue where people say, oh, okay, so the large lot people get away with not having a screen. I agree with what, what Councilmember Barker said, and just not, if it's on the side of that, bring it in, bring it in the best you can.
Take it in wherever.
But don't make them put it behind a deck, build a decorative wall if they don't have the ability. But you can't leave it out of the curb, bring it in. If it can be seen, it's going to be, you know, I understand what, what Matt was saying, but there's situations where it's going to be seen. And if you differentiate and say the large lot people can get away with this, and the small lot people have to put it away, you're going to have conflict. So just have people bring it in and not worry about the decorative wall.
We'll bring back some example language for the next draft.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? That was receptacles. All right, nine five fifteen inspections. Did anyone have questions about what this section?
Same manager's going to go out and inspect all.
Yeah, I want to see this. That's my only comment on this. I want to see this.
Or designate.
I want to be standing out on the street when this happens.
So you're going to designate Joel to do that, right?
No, he doesn't work for me, so it has to be someone else.
Not half the time. How are we going to get somebody out to inspect trash cans?
What are our.
Well, that's, that's.
What are our code compliance staff called? Are they called officers?
Yeah, code compliance officers, right, Larry? Code compliance officers, yeah.
I think we have seniors, senior code compliance officers, yeah. I think an important thing here is, the city shall seek voluntary compliance prior to issuing a notice of violation, which that process triggers under this enforcement and penalties. This is, it also, the city manager or designee may conduct inspections in response to reports of violations, so it'll be complaint-driven as alluded to early. Any questions about that? All right. Enforcement and penalties, this mimics language in other parts of the code, specifically in code compliance for property maintenance. The process would be very similar as far as what's required to do a notice of violation and when people don't comply, either voluntarily or after receiving that notice of violation. So that's what this starts triggering. We envision this being in pretty extreme cases, that people would not comply to bring their cart back and place it wherever they're supposed to place it, or just refuse to pay for the service, whatever it might be, so. Like I said, it mimics other code compliance language. Yes, Councilmember Barker.
Okay. On four, F four. It said, every day, any violation of any provision of this article continues shall constitute a separate violation or offense. And then if you go back up, it says, the first offense during a twenty-four-hour consecutive month period will be X, and the second, and the third, but every day of that violation is a separate offense. So that means that in three days, this person has their third consecutive violation in twenty-four months. That makes absolutely no sense to me at all. That's the way it reads.
I have a problem with this whole section.
It, it just needs to be clarified. It does not make practical sense for the reader to understand what will happen to him or her if he or she does not comply with this ordinance. It's convoluted and gobbledygook.
So there's different things that they could be noticed for, right?
I know you can explain it.
Joel?
The explanation, I can explain it to myself, once I work through it word by word by word, but a person who is reading this should not have to do that. It should be clear and precise. We are telling people, if you don't do this, this is what's going to happen to you. And it needs to be clear in their minds so that they know it and there's no questions.
We can clear that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what I wanted.
I have a problem. It says, we're talking about criminal citations in here for not having trash service. I just have a big problem with that. We're now, we're going to, we're going to, I mean, this is a civil matter. It shouldn't be a criminal matter. I remember it used to be a criminal matter if your dog was loose.
Like I said, the reason, it just mimics the, the first two are civil, right? The last one, and we just mimic current code, again, this is your.
It's the same, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
We have, the first two are civil, and the third one is criminal.
And so if there's alternatives that people want to propose.
But we could change that.
If the council desires, we can make it all civil, we could make it.
I will say, sometimes when you just have civil violations of repetitive offenders, there's really no incentive to come to court. There's no incentive to pay the fees. They're called penalties, actually, when it's civil. When it's criminal, it's an actual criminal violation. Fine. Some people won't, they'll ignore, and so what do you do at that point? They don't come to court, so on a civil violation, it's called a default judgment. So they're defaulted out at the first three hundred and fifty dollars. The second one could be the second, the next day, you're correct. The violation could be, so then it'd be six hundred, and they won't come to court. Some people don't go to court. So then what do you do? And this has been a problem forever, as long as I've been doing code compliance. In some cities, they actually, well, some cities in California, they lean the property, actually. And then they forfeit the property, and they actually, in expensive communities, they actually go for the forfeiture. And at that point, the city owns the house, or whoever pays the fees. So that's how that works, but I know you don't want to do anything like that. But to get someone to court, and Larry could explain to you all the difficulties that they have with code compliance, and some, some people just disregard any notice. What's, how many people do that? He can speak to that. But it's very difficult to enforce if you don't have more than just a civil penalty.
I think from a practical standpoint, if you take ten seventy-one a month times twelve, that's a lot less than the three fifty. So in reality, anybody who would not subscribe to trash collection, who's going to be subject to a civil forfeiture of three fifty, it kind of doesn't make sense to me. So I would hope that we would never, ever take someone to court because they didn't subscribe, because it's cheaper to subscribe than to pay one three hundred and fifty dollar. But, so I didn't address your other point, but I just think that these are the exact fines that are recently updated in the rest of chapter nine. But I'm thinking that it would be certainly a rare circumstance that someone who just does the math decides, you know, I'm just going to get the service for a hundred and thirty dollars a year.
So I'm hearing that there's no alternative language for staff to consider, except Joel said he would look for ways to clear it up.
Joel's going to take on the.
Or make him clear.
Well, number three and four.
Yes. That is the last section. Is there any others on that section regarding enforcement and penalties?
No, but I did, I did want to mention something that might put Vice Mayor Wilson's mind to rest. So let's say your trash pickup is Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, no one's going to cite you if you have your can out Monday evening, and no one's going to cite you Tuesday all day, because six AM to six PM is the time. No one's going to cite you Wednesday evening, no one's going to cite you all day Thursday. City's closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so as long as your trash can isn't seen on Wednesday between six AM and six PM, you're good.
He's been sitting here all night figuring a way out of this.
He gamed the system.
Way to go.
So Matt, Your Honor, Matt, you're going to, and Anna, take all these updates, we're going to get those and start another draft.
And we'll bring it back for the November seventh, eighteenth work session.
Work session, okay.
And possible, if we, well, we'll have to work through if it'll be available for consideration on the nineteenth or not, so. But certainly, work session on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Two more weeks to review it.
Is that everything on this thing?
And, and we'll, we'll try to get the changes updated quickly and at least email it out, so you have further time to consider and look at the changes and.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, then we'll be adjourned until tomorrow.